And everyone, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the city council work session. First item on the work session tonight is the Triangle Conservation Easement. Mayor?
Good evening. So, we have talked about the Triangle Conservation Easement for a while now. And Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board had drafted some deed restrictions. And we had discussed them as a body a couple times. And then, and there were some council members who made some comments and made some recommendations. So, I just want to put it back in front of you because we are, of course, moving forward with the Triangle property, working with the engineer to get a design plan together for that, and really need to move forward with these deed restrictions. So, I wanted to put these back before you so we could discuss them, you could review them again, and make any recommendations. I think Councilman Martin and Councilman Burrell had already made comments, and they're in this packet that you see.
Alright, thank you.
As I'm looking, Mayor, as I'm looking through this, it seems like that at least a couple of comments, I think I only made a couple, it seems like you were in agreement with those comments. Does that sound familiar?
That's right. I think the things that we were concerned about mainly, and Amy Paulson, who helped draft these, she's got some good explanations. The things that, you know, we had talked about where there were, like, any commercial or industrial use of the property, obviously, we know that's gonna happen. The placement or construction of any buildings other than restroom facilities, we had talked about what if we wanted an outdoor classroom or something to that extent. So, there were just a few things that we felt that we needed to define a little bit more, or things that we need to be a little bit broader on, to make sure we weren't being too restrictive.
Number seven, I feel like, number seven, we were talking about relative to trails.
Right, for ADI accessibility, some of that kind of stuff. So, and again, you can go back and look at, the third page, I believe, in here is where Amy came back and kinda answered how we could define those even further. And then, again, Councilman Martin and Councilman Burrell had also put cement from, had also responded and given some feedback.
So, what your requesting is, is do we have additional feedback, or have we changed our minds on any of this?
Correct. And for us to be able to move, right. For us to be able to move forward with these, so, as we're going through this design phase, because part of this is going to be where we, you know, really restrict the use of it to make sure that maintains, you know, we maintain it as green space into perpetuity.
It seems like, you know, and also being reminded by looking at these, a lot of the things that they put in, while they sound like maybe good recommendations, some of them might be just a little bit too strict.
Correct, too restrictive.
Some might be a little bit more specific in that.
Right. And now that we have, you know, we're working with the design team, we have a good idea of what we want to see, you know, on those parcels as far as trails and different things. I think that we're probably in a better position now to review these and make some recommendations than we were before.
Alright, so what's the next step, then, if we don't have additional items aside from the comments that are here in this packet? I know we're kind of on a time crunch to try to get.
We are. I'd like to, you know, start, not really a time crunch, but like to at least start moving forward, because there are some things that we might want to do as far as doing a quick claim deed with, you know, single tax, or, we just need to look at that and see if that's something that we're able to do. We also need to review the documents from the purchase of the property to make sure that we're able to do that. But go ahead and start this process so we make sure we're, you know, following in line with the design phase of it.
Why do we need a quick claim deed with single tax?
We really don't necessarily have to have that. That's what we talked about originally, was doing that.
Yeah, we kind of built away from that.
And letting them deed that back to us as parklands, because it's been, it's been, I guess, that's the way we've done the bluffs, and we thought that that would help us secure that as parklands.
That would put a deed restriction.
Yeah, like a simultaneous, same transaction, deed it to them, deed it back, rather than, I think we'd stepped away from a conservation easement.
We did, but then I thought you had just said just put make it a park. I thought it weren't yours to say, and you just took it and make it a park.
Well, we had talked about that, but the way the other parklands in town have been established, it seems like it would be an extra layer of protection.
It's the surest way, other than a conservation easement, of making sure it remains a park.
Correct, because then you'd have to go through two levels, I guess, of.
Because if you do that with single tax, it requires a vote of their, it requires a vote of their body, or of their board, and then it can require vote of their body. It would require a vote of the body to overturn what the board does. So, it gives you that extra layer of protection in order for it to stay parklands.
So, once they, if they vote on that, and then we deed it to them, they vote on that, and it may per se, then they deed it back to us, that deed restriction, that they can impose it, and we can't change it, right?
Correct. And it would take a vote of their whole membership in order to overturn it as well. So, it gives you that extra layer, again.
Well, if they don't own, if they don't own it, and they deed it back to us, then they can't even take a vote, right?
But I think on any changes to the restrictions that they put in the deed, I think, if we were trying to do something outside of what restrictions they had put in place, their membership would have to vote on allowing a change.
The other thing, too, is I think as we continue to look for grants, when you do something with a DECA, and we are on the agenda tonight as we're applying for a trails grant, that also gives you another layer, because any improvements you do have to go through the state as well, once you use their funds. So, there will be a lot of, a lot of layers to this, this piece of property to make sure that it stays parklands.
Yeah, I agree that we need to do whatever we can to keep it parkland forever. We don't want to, I know that maybe sounds selfish, but we don't want a future council to overturn what we've done and try to protect it.
No, I think it's important for us to protect that green space at the entryway of our city, too.
And I think this seems to accomplish what we would accomplish with the conservation easement, but a little, it gives us a little more flexibility to do things that we may want to do down there in the future.
Right, and we just don't want the deed restrictions to be too restrictive.
Right.
We want it to be something that we can work with.
So, Mayor, can you have these comments then implemented in us, if I don't hear any others, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, that's what my question is, what's the next step here to?
The next step is, if y'all, once you review this, if y'all are okay with the comments that are made, or with the restrictions that are already there, shoot me an email, let me know that. And then, we can move forward with the next step in the process, which would be, I need to do some due diligence on my end, probably with Lisa and with Marcus, just checking the purchase of that property, and making sure there's nothing there that would prevent us doing the quick claim deed with single tax. I do need to check that one more time, just to make sure that we're doing, you know, we can do that. And just then bring these deed restrictions back before y'all to make sure we adopt them, and then we can move forward with single tax.
And that won't mess up the grant opportunity, I mean, the grant would have been awarded, right?
It will not. No, sorry.
I would make sure that, even if it's a simultaneous closing, if it, even instantaneously with the single tax, would that negate the grant that we've already been awarded?
I hope not, but I will double check that.
Certainly, yes, ma'am.
Alright. Councilman Boone, any comments on that? Alright.
Not too bad. All the conversation, the other intake keeps me occupied.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item up is a budget update, the utilities and the five plan, five-year plan. So, y'all doing that as a collective, or you Kim and Mayor, or, alright. Whenever y'all are ready. Okay, you can come in one at a time, listen.
Let each of the utilities talk. This is a five-year plan from each of the utilities. The next budget meetings that we have with council members will be, that's one of the things that we'll discuss, is the five-year plan, and meet individually with utilities to talk about their budget. So, wanted to make sure you had this before you, and were able to ask any questions, and let each utility director give, give a, just a brief synopsis of what their plans are for the next year.
Alright, who wants to go first? Alright, Conrad, come on up, sir.
How are y'all this evening?
Doing good.
Well, we pretty much discussed everything in our last council meeting with engineers and presented our strengths and our weaknesses. So, we just worked it done on what we thought was the most important to the least over the next five years.
Alright, so I got three different tabs here, or, we're going through the five-year plan, that's a.
Five-year.
Oh, okay. That's the, yeah, so. Alright, go ahead, sir.
So, which one?
It's the, it's this one, ahead for the five-year plan, yes, sir. Alright.
The 46th project, which we discussed, to get us that loop feed. And upgrades to the downtown.
Okay.
While we're on that, I got some questions about that.
Yeah, go right ahead.
We were talking to the gentleman about this upgrade. You know, I couldn't help but want to ask him, when they came up with their seven million upgrade, it became nine million, it became 12 million, did they, did they talk about this additional 3 million? I don't remember that being in the Cadillac plan. But now that we've spent all that money with them, now they've come up with another 3 million that they want us to spend, and some of it sounded like a big sales job to me. Are you fully convinced that all that he tried to sell us is needed, or is it all, is some of it? I think the loop is needed.
Yes, sir.
I thought some of it was a luxury item that we didn't necessarily.
I think he was just giving the mayor an option in different looks at overhead versus the underground. Basically, what the biggest difference, biggest options, yes, sir. What it would cost to go leave it overhead versus if we got to change out the wires and conductors, to what it would cost to put it all underground.
Wow.
But, you know, during those hurricanes, we lose power.
Yes, sir.
We're not out of power for months. I mean, we, you know, and maybe we're gonna have a cat fire, and maybe we will, maybe I'll be in my work, but we sure do seem to get power on pretty quick. And I don't know that I could have, and I'm speaking to the council, I don't know that I can justify those additional millions and millions of dollars for, quite frankly, you know, a few trees, a few limbs that are our power lines. It just, it's like I told you guys and ladies before, man, I'd rather reward our people than to have all these bells and whistles that may or may not be needed.
Yes, sir.
And if I could jump in, I will tell you that when I met with him originally, when we started talking about it, and he was asking what we wanted to see, I did ask him to look at some areas to do underground, not everything in our system. There are some more sensitive areas where there's more mature trees, typically the fruit and nut area, where we, during Sally, if you just think about FIG in particular, that FIG and church intersection, and how torn up it was, Summit and church, some of those areas like that, I said, if you'll just give us a ballpark, it's something that if we decided as a body, or the council decided it's something they want to move forward on, that we could, that we would have a guesstimate on cost. It's not something that we have to do, but I wanted us to be able to look at that and see what it would look like. Because those are some areas that does take a little bit longer to get the power restored back to because of the mature trees. You know, in most areas now, the newer builds, we require them to go underground. But in some of our, you know, older sections of town, we do not have that.
That we were out of power for, what was the most, any of your customers were out of power, most time?
I'm not sure.
Couple of days?
Maybe a week on some of them.
Yeah, it was five days on some of them.
Five days, okay.
Me?
Five days? You're on five days?
Yeah, I am.
But, so, so this is the five-year plan, so 2023, all you've really got in here for '23 is the KV line, the KV poles along Dyer from Greeno to Bishop, and underground from Magnolia to Church. So, we got about 3.1 million being proposed for, for 2023.
Yes, sir.
And, um, let's see.
So, there's, to me, there's another big component missing, is that there's, you know, there's a five-year list of projects, and there's costs, but the other half of the equation, where the money comes from, is not on here. So, when you have a plan, you have a plan to pay for it, right?
Yes, sir.
What is the plan to pay for this?
That, I'm not sure.
That's why that, when we have our budget discussions, the treasurer will be there, the council will be there, we'll be talking about that and how we fund these.
So, this is just, just kinda going over the highlights of what we'd like to do, and then the order of things, you know, I know all, all what's in the 2023 budget proposed, I mean, of this, I know we've been talking about the loop for a while. The underground from Magnolia Church is something that we've been discussing for a little bit. And we can look at the 24, 5, 6, and 7 plans, I mean, I guess that can always be changed, but to that point, that's, uh, 25, 26, 27 is when you're looking at some of that copper upgrade. And that was one of the things from that meeting, we were just trying to figure out just how, how pressing is that, does it need to be replaced? And I mean, I'm sure at some point it does, but what's the, I guess, what's the urgency of that?
Most of those lines, the copper is single-phase, and our crews can do some of them as we go along, but we were trying to get your major circuits first.
Okay.
So, if we were to have a substation go down, we can do some switching and tie them together, whereas, like you said, in some of the places, we have a mile of wire that's too small in between. So, if we switch it, you're gonna burn the wire down, so we're trying to, that's why we listed the way we kinda did, to keep it, where if we did lose a sub, we can still keep power to most of our residents.
Gotcha.
Like I said, we're gonna try to work on some of these single phases to change out the copper in-house.
Okay.
But like you said, it was just a guess, we just tried to estimate, figure out which ones are the most important, and make us a good plan.
And I think what you have to remember, too, is it's not so much about extending that network or our footprint for electrical, because we can't do that, but it's more about capacity. So, and I think that's what Conrad's talking about, I mean, the wire size that we have currently just will not hold, is not gonna hold the capacity that we have, so some of it's gonna have to be changed out.
Gotcha. And obviously, you know, we put together a five-year plan, but, you know, year to year, priorities might, might change, and you may have to tweak. But you're pretty set on the items that are in the 2023, that we'll be doing those this upcoming year.
Right. Council president, on these huge expenses, I would recommend we get a second opinion on some of these, on the copper wire and things like that. I think the loop's been around for a while, I think we've probably.
They've talked about it ever since I've been here.
Pardon?
They've talked about it ever since I've been here, over 30 years.
On the loop or the copper?
The loop.
Right.
Trying to get that 44 line where we can have two separate ways.
I remember that, we've talked about that a little while.
Yeah, I think on the, on the copper, and again, that one, we've got, we've got time to, to address, but I agree, before we actually start down the road, is that, all the proposed upgrades in total were like 25 million or so? And, and obviously, that's a substantial amount of money, since we just spent 10 to 12 million on the electrical system. Any, any questions? I'd say let's focus, because we do need to talk about that, but let's focus on what's on the 23 and the 24. Any questions on that for Conrad?
I guess that's just some of those things that kinda caught me off-guard when we had spent the 12 million dollars. I was made to believe that we were solving all of our capacity issues, and we were gonna be good for some time, with the exception of the loop. And then, I guess, you know, I'd still, you know, when you adopt a plan, I'd sure like to see the financials of how that's gonna be paid for, and, you know, electrical can support that, you know, and that obviously makes it a lot easier. But I still think, when something, when you're spending 20 million dollars, I don't, I don't think it hurts to get, you know, another engineer in Florida to just confirm what one of them's telling us.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it won't hurt. Anyway, we'll certainly, I think we've got some meetings scheduled with Kim to talk about the financial component of this, on the how, how do you afford it? And I guess these kinda outlined in priority ranking, as far as the most pressing items first.
Yes, sir. But like you said, if we change something that gets more dangerous and needs more work, then we can, we can flip them around.
Yeah, and I don't think it hurts, you know, in the next year or so, to get a second opinion on, on that copper replacement, and figure out which ones do we need to replace before we go down that road? What's the most pressing, so. But I do know you also want to always be working on, on your system, or else you'll, you'll wind up with these large, large projects that is easier to try to do a little bit every year than to try to do a major overhaul that inconveniences people, so.
Right.
I do appreciate you kinda bringing forth the five-year plan, and I think, having seen the numbers yet, but I would think that these price points are within a range that we could afford on an annual basis, just functional figuring out what's definitely necessary, and when, when the time comes, are these still the priorities, or is something else become more urgent all of a sudden? Thank you, Conrad, is there anything?
Yes, sir.
Since I do have these budgets, do we want to cover anything else on, on vehicles or utility system? I've got multiple budgets here, so I don't know if that's... Kim, is that something we want to cover today? Or is that, you know, all these budgets, or do we want to just go through just the five-year plan?
We've given those to y'all on other work sessions, or, and so, this is just giving you more information, and so, when we meet, I believe it's next week, that'll have you opportunity to ask more questions on the capital, on the capital equipment needs.
Okay.
Okay. Unless you have questions today on any of them, but those are.
But this is really for us to have for next week? You weren't really intending to discuss all this today, or?
Unless you have questions for the departments, for any of the, I know there's some large equipments on there. I know, like, for electric, they've got some bucket trucks, and I know we have some bucket trucks that was ordered, actually, a couple of meetings back, that, you know, we know they're ordered now, won't come in until '23. And we have some roll, what we call the rollover equipment.
Okay, so, council, we'll go, keep going through the five-year plan, and if you do see anything on, on these other printouts that you want to ask about, you can certainly, certainly ask about that. If not, we'll, we'll know that this is gonna be discussed in greater detail, beginning next week with two-by-two meetings with Kim, that I think everyone's already scheduled or in the process of scheduling. Thank you, I just wasn't sure, since y'all have provided all this to us. Next up, who wants to go? Jason, Jeremy?
Gas, I think.
Gas next? Alright, getting, getting jumped. Yes, sir, you want to start with wastewater?
We beat this up a lot in the last couple of years since I've been here, so it'd probably be easier for y'all to ask the questions than need it, just to read off all of the 2023 is in support of the restore project. As you see, all the force mains has got to be extended, are upsized, I see the upsizing of the lift stations, of six stations.
You said all of 2023? Jason?
All of 2023, and the extension from Bishop Road to Publix, which will be an extension that's gonna go into 2023.
I'm trying to find that.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
And I've got my notes, I can't see.
Is that, is that on here? This is a small font.
I'm not seeing it, yeah.
The utility system, I'm sorry, but this, this key right here.
Okay.
And I can't see the font on the one that you're talking about, so.
Okay, so this.
I apologize, I can't see it.
Mayor, what are you, what are your thoughts on them releasing those funds? Are we getting to where we're at?
The restore?
That we can actually extend the bond?
Yeah, we just, we already did the project. I mean, you have to get reimbursed, so you start the project, and you get reimbursed to the water. And we're hoping to.
Those bids did come back in, about 3 million over what we thought they were gonna be there, about 30% higher. We have been working with the Restore Committee to get a plus-up on that budget, so we are hopeful that we will get that, those additional funds through the Restore Committee to complete that whole project.
So, they'll go from 10 to 13 in order to absorb that extra 3 million?
Correct. And we also are hoping that we will get some, some funds through ADM to help with some of these projects as well. So, Jason, I think, has that noted on here, on the five-year plan? We haven't gotten official word of that yet, but we are, we're pretty hopeful that we're gonna, we're gonna get that amount.
Do we, do we restore that? Do you, council actually have that money, or do they have to go back to the state and request a plus-up from them?
They have a bucket for contingencies, so that we vote on. And almost every project is coming in at least 30% over budget, construction projects, so anything that involves materials, so, we have that contingency fund set up.
So, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, when I'm looking at, I got one printout that's a five-year plan, that has, for wastewater, it's got a 1.6 million dollar project, and a $250,000 project roughly. And then, I look at this other form for utility system improvements, and it's got substantially more than that. So, which one is accurate, and what information are we looking at?
So, the first line, the first, you see in 2022, it says force main project from 2018.
Yep.
And then, you're seeing 2023, so if you, if you combine the 5.2 plus the 1.5, I'm thinking that's where you're getting those funds from. The sewer, where it says sewer force main?
I see the sewer force main project for 1.57, and I'm trying to.
And then, the next block, Jimmy?
Yep. The sewer force main, and then all that.
And then, it's got all the notes that tell you, you know, one's Twin Beach, one's North Section.
Okay, it's just sort of hard to.
Please together.
Yeah, okay, and some of these carry over from, it's just hard to connect the two of these, to sync up.
I got a question about the wastewater treatment plan, headworks upgrade. It says it's a multi-year ARPA program. Through ADM, SRF program, so that's something we will compete?
We have, we have applied.
We should be.
We have applied.
But we haven't been awarded.
We haven't been awarded yet, but we have applied.
Now, that's something, Jason, if you briefed us on, has been several weeks ago, I know, talking about the headworks, right?
Yes, sir.
So, what is that timeframe? What happens if we don't win that grant? I mean, how critical is it to get that completed? I mean, that's in, shown in 2023.
Yes, sir, it's, we had issues with this right event, so.
What do we, what was our max flow there at the sewer, did that ring?
Well, we pushed out a little over 90.
2023 is gonna be these numbers.
But that wasn't our flow.
Thank you, sir.
So, we, it's hard to calculate, because we did have some overfunds. But it, hopefully, at some point, we can talk, I just don't think this.
So, they, I hope, go ahead, keep going. I was gonna say, so, on that ARPA, part of that is that we, we need to have shovel-ready projects engineered and ready to go, and then apply. So, that's why we're handling the engineering on those fronts, so.
And that is completed, the engineering, the preliminary engineering on the direction. Garber did a great job, they've got a, their lead on this, I think his last name's Wes, I've known him from my past, they did a lot of wastewater plant designs north, matter of fact, they're working on Decatur's now, so hopefully, we'll have that after we get through the budget. I'd like to do a presentation for y'all to, can see what the findings were. There's a couple of different directions we can go, and y'all will be in the driver's seat to kind of get us on the right path on that.
So, that ARPA grant, it says it's multi-year, will it, it won't take multiple years to upgrade it, though, will it?
It depends on, I put that in there because of the way the budget follows, it could because of.
When you say, but you're talking maybe two years, not five years?
That's right, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the 2024, those 3 million dollar, are those just placeholders, kinda just a, just routine maintenance, and just kind of forecasting what you think you might need?
Yes, the lift stations, we have currently, as you all know, we have 80 lift stations, and 85% of them are above ground, or are up stations, and those, that's just giving us the opportunity and money to get those in ground and upgrade those stations. Those are the stations that give us the most trouble, high maintenance. So, that's the reason you see. So that's the reason you see that in multiple years, as money is available and those stations do need to be upgraded.
You're just forecasting what you think you're going to need to, or what you can live with, reasonably keep pace with that.
Yes, and we're trying to, with the budget, as when y'all get, dive into it a little deeper with our department, then you'll see that's the reason for asking for a couple more employees. We've got a great group of guys, and we've got a crew that's very good at rehabbing these stations, so there's a lot we can do in-house and save a lot of money and increase time, especially in the environment we're in with contractors, we can't give them. So we can talk further on that, but we can do a lot of this ourselves.
Counsel, I don't really think it looks all that bad. I thought it would have looked worse, actually, Jason. But, so I would ask you, like I asked electric department, you know, I'd like to see some financial, a plan of how you're going to pay for it.
I would too, yes, sir.
I just get this feeling we're putting off and asking some big bond issuance, and I feel like it's just, I just get this feeling it's hush-hush, and we're not being told that you're going to come back and want some big huge bond issuance.
We have not discussed any kind of bond issuance or anything. We expect to review that with the Council when we're having those meetings about how these are going to be funded.
And just to ask you another question on 2023, so I'm looking at, I know the last item's a multi-year, but on this form, and this may not be what you're looking at.
It's not.
Okay. Well, on that form, we've got about $1.8 million in planned projects for this upcoming year and about $14 million for the following year, and I'm just curious, can you get that many, if you have the money available and we have a way to fund it, can you get all that accomplished? I mean, minus the one that's multi-year, is that not realistic to...
Mine, I don't have that, but definitely no, that's not realistic.
Okay, that's sort of mine.
No. So I couldn't see it, I don't know.
That was my question, I mean, even if you've got it, it doesn't matter, so I...
So I think the two main ones would be realistic for next year. I mean, that's two separate crews, two separate job areas. I think those two, which would be the primary ones, would be realistic for next year.
It's just the issue we're going to have is materials.
Right.
All this ACP, we're finding that materials are getting harder to get now.
Sure, outside, you know, something, we don't have anything to do with that, I mean, as far as, when I say we, the entire city, you order it, it either comes or it doesn't, but I mean, if it did, it's all standard practices, I think you could get it done in that timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, I think the upcoming year looks reasonable. I just saw all these items on the following year, and I'm thinking that doesn't seem realistic, but...
It'd be a carryover.
Okay. I mean, I guess if, and not to beat up the issue here, but at some point, if we're looking at a five-year plan, we ought to have a, like a realistic picture of what we can do in five years, not just put everything on the agenda, and I mean, if we can't do it, we can't do it, so...
Physically.
Right, right.
Well, then you may have a slow year in the third year, function in the second year's projects, and get them all done in the third year, but by five years, they could all get done.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking sort of almost of the psychology of having your teams check off a list of things that are reasonable and attainable, rather than a to-do list a mile long that you seem like you never get to the bottom of.
That's the way we should do it every day, in our department, because we're so far behind.
I know, I'm trying to find a way to get y'all some wins, so that everybody feels good about what they've accomplished and not just overwhelmed.
I think that's the city, is that you might check one thing off, but you add five things to the list, so it's just a matter of what we do. I think, you know, utilities and people are used to that, especially with the now education.
Well, we do appreciate you guys. All right, Jeremy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
So the biggest thing on ours to note is the $1 million for the engineering and cast iron replacement. We finished the evaluation with the engineering firms, and next council meeting, we'll be bringing that to you to present the engineering company for the mayor to go into negotiations. So we don't know what it's going to cost, right? The number we put out there for this coming up year was the $1 million. Well, once the mayor enters into negotiations, and we sit down, lay out our plan, talk to the engineering company, that will get more realistic, right? I'm not sure what that number will be, but we don't feel like it will be the $1 million that we have budgeted this coming up year for.
All right.
And then in the five-year plan, the only thing that's not in there is also the cast iron replacement, the leak from the pipe. Obviously, once we deal with the engineering company, we design our master plan, then we'll figure out how we're going to implement that, whether it be a five-year plan, eight-year plan, or a 10-year plan. So we won't know that until we finish the design process. I'm sure it'll take a year and a half, two years to design it, and then we'll figure out how to implement that.
And what's the deadline on that, 2040 or 2030?
As quick as we can, but I think the official deadline's around 2040.
Okay.
But I...
We don't want to...
They're not going to wait that long.
You're going to do it around until 2039?
No.
Yeah, so...
So they're going to, the engineering firm's going to basically tell us, here's the projected costs, and here's how much you need to do per year to...
Well, and that'll be up to us to decide.
Right.
We'll have plenty of time, once we figure out the master plan, how we want to phase this in, you know, does the Council, the mayor want to phase it in over five years, over 10 years? You know, we'll have plenty of time to figure out how we're going to phase it in.
Well...
Might be a three-year project, but until we lay out the master plan with the engineering company, it's going to be kind of hard to... It all depends on what contractor wins the bid, right? Can they get it done in four years, or will it take them six years? Do we bid it in phases? Do you bid the whole? There's kind of a lot of unknowns with the cast iron replacement and leak from the pipe.
It's also kind of like a jigsaw puzzle, because you also have to take into consideration the other utility projects you're doing, what roads you have torn up, you know, any kind of major, if we were going to do Church Street, you know, infrastructure project, and then you're also going to tear up every artery into town with gas projects, you obviously can't do that. So there's going to have to be a lot of coordination between all the utilities and public works to make sure we're not, you know, tearing up every road in town.
And then the government grant also. We will be fine for the government grant, but right now, we don't have anything to take the FMS up to apply for.
So we did correct things while on Church Street, right, while we had the whole road open up?
We did.
And we would outsource the cast iron replacement?
Yes.
But what about the, what are some of the other things we're outsourcing? I had had some questions asked recently about, you know, existing service, I guess people, you know, hurricane season, people think about running generators and wanting to know kind of what's the process for that, because I think that we're short-staffed, well, maybe not short-staffed, we're just busy.
Right. Generally, we haven't outsourced anything.
Okay.
We're starting to, and the Church Street was outsourced. We have a mile of pipe, two miles of pipe to run, you know, with your approval this year that we'll outsource, but trying to get some contractors in here. Typically, we try to do everything in-house, and it hasn't always worked, you know, trying to take on everything at one time with the 19 employees that we have.
Well, I think y'all doing a great job, and I want to expand on what Jimmy said, because I had mentioned this to him, is that, you know, we're starting to hear, and from several people, and I think the mayor's done a good job of taking care of, you know, some special situations where you may have somebody that is on oxygen, that's created with electricity, and they need to get on a generator, and if you have a storm and they lose power meter, they literally could, they could pass. And so I know that y'all have done some one-offs on that, but then there's the people that may not be in that situation that do want to run gas to their home to get on a generator, and it may be, may not be life and death. It may be, but it may not be, but it may be a matter of convenience for them, and they've been here all their life, and they're being told that it's going to be, that they're being told, get back to us next year. And I had them hand me the letters that came from Fairhope Utilities.
And we've been telling people, and it's been so with the...
Hold on, don't get defensive just yet.
No, because I hate it too. Like, it bothers me.
We want to help you now, so the question is this, what can we do? Because we don't want to tell these people that have been here forever, they may have lived in the same house for 50 years in an older established neighborhood, and somebody that's on the fringes of town, some big brand-new development, they're getting gas, and the people that have been in the house 50 years are told, wait till next year. So can we, can we have someone come in and outsource that and help us to do that? Because now we have fees where we, I don't even know that we'd be losing money. We're losing money every day, we're not selling gas too, so what can we do?
So we are ahead of schedule. The biggest thing that we are doing right now is GPS Rule 13. It came down from the state, and we have to have it done by December of this year. We're way ahead of schedule. That was the biggest thing driving this, right, is the GPS Rule 13 that the government and the state mandated in all gas companies.
What all is that?
So what they consider inactive service, it's not what we consider here, but inactive service is a riser to a house that has gas on it with no gas meter.
Gotcha.
So it's what the state FMS considers as inactive service. So all of those must be located and killed by December of this year. Problem is, us, like a lot of gas companies, we don't, we didn't know where those were at, right? So it's a piece of pipe sitting next to a house, sitting in an empty lot where a trailer used to be, that has gas on it, but there's no gas meter. So we literally have taken crews that had to walk to every house from Baymanet, working our way through Fairhope, Daphne, Spanish Ford, headed to Fish River. So we started in Baymanet, and we got six guys, and that's what they do all day long. And then once they find them, then we have to go back and kill them. So we've made it to Fairhope, Daphne, so we started this project a while back, and so we have potentially two, three-man crews, this one big crew that's walking around every house, Stapleton, Baymanet, Spanish Ford, because we know where our gas meters are, it's the ones that, the risers that we don't know where they are. So our goal is to be done in the next month and a half, but we started this project, we're way ahead of schedule, but it has taken a lot of time, a lot of work, a lot of effort to go walk around every house in Stapleton, not just houses, empty lots, right?
I didn't say kill it, you're killing it at the main.
Correct.
It's already killed.
Well, there's no meaning.
Yeah, well, the valve's turned off, obviously.
Right, but there's still 20 pounds of gas in the house.
Everybody understands that, or you're killing it at the main.
What do you do when you find them?
We GPS them, and then once we get 70 or 80, we go back and kill all those. And we go back to GPS and find them, call and line locates, go back and kill them.
So you're ahead of schedule, which is great. You're about a month and a half away from completing that, so what does that mean for the people that want gas to their homes in Fairhope?
Right, and we have been slowly sprinkling people in. Like I said, we've always taken care of the disadvantaged peoples, the, you know, the people that, you know, oxygen and all the medical devices, and slowly starting to bring people along. Now, obviously, once our crews finish up, we'll have two crews out there that can go back to running full-time. You know, it was just this eight, nine months.
What is the typical wait time and what is the backlog for that now?
So with all the...
I've got to have answers for these people.
No, with all the rain right now, about four or five, about four weeks out with the rain we've been having. Obviously, it's not terrible.
Four weeks out, it's not terrible.
Right. They probably won't get generators that fast, and they get electricians, the wire, put in transfer switches, usually they can't get their stuff done that fast either. Typically, we're two to three weeks behind, but this has created a little backlog since we've been working on this GPS Rule 13.
That sounds a lot more powerful than a year out.
And I would tell people to go ahead and call back in. Go ahead and call back in. Don't wait till the first of the year.
Yeah, we've been telling people.
I would tell them to call back, go ahead and call back in, don't wait till the first of the year.
Can we put a message that they're not going to, I can't...
The problem is, if we put a message out like that, a blanket message, then we're going to be backlogged again.
And it dips, right? I mean, we slowed down with it, hurricane season hit, and everybody's calling. You know, you get through hurricane season without a hurricane, and then it's going to go back down.
Right now, it's hot, everybody wants it.
Right. Hurricane season, stuff starts hitting the gulf, and everybody wants it right now. So we are doing the best we can and trying to sprinkle things in, but the main thing is finishing up GPS Rule 13 and, you know...
So how long do you think it'll take you to clear that backlog that you have, once you, you know, start here in a month and a half, two months?
Depends on how many people are calling at one time, right?
Do you know, Mayor, I mean, do you have, do you have just dozens of people waiting, or do you, you know, is it a small number?
No, they still have to, right.
Am I just hearing from the only people in town that want it, or is it a much bigger need?
No, I mean, we, no, we've been hearing from folks too, and that's why I'm saying, if you know somebody, tell them to go ahead and call back in, let's get them on the list, because we did tell most people to call back after the first of the year, because we thought we were going to be till December, but we're finishing up early. So tell them to call back in. The other thing we continue to talk about is that you're probably going to see us come back before the Council to ask to increase that monthly fee for generators, because what happens is, we spend a lot of time installing generators, but you don't really sell a lot of gas from those, obviously. People need them during hurricane season. So a lot of people are putting in a flat fee per month for just generators only. Also, we did, you know, up our charge for gas services, but now with all the cost, it's not even covering what we needed to cover, so we are going to be bringing that back before you also to increase, to increase that service fee. You know, just with the cost of everything going up, we're not covering our cost anymore.
Last comment, Counsel.
Yes, sir.
My last comment on this is that, if we get in a situation like that, me personally, I would prefer for y'all to come to the Council and let's find a solution, instead of telling people that to call us next year. I don't think that's a good look, and I think that we can put our minds together and come up with a solution for that, and even if we have to outsource it. And maybe you can't, there may not be enough labor out there to outsource it. I understand everybody's busy, and they, you know, the people you might be outsourcing to, they may not exist, and they may have more work. It may be longer for them to get to it, but at least if we know that and we try to have a solution, we can tell the citizens that we really, you know, did, and maybe y'all did, maybe this has all been discussed.
This did not go without a lot of discussion, and not talk about bringing in contractors, working overtime, what we could do, but literally, they have been working and doing everything they can to get people who really need...
Well, we're not questioning what they did, we're just wondering if we could have got a...
Yeah, because we've taken a different step, but, you know, we did look at outsourcing it, and it was going to cost us, you know, right at $1,500 to $2,500 a service to get a contractor in here.
To hook up services, but you also don't want just contractors hooking up your service. I mean, we looked at a lot of different options.
Yeah, and I do think that, hopefully, we don't run into this again. You know, our goal is to sell natural gas, right, to our citizens of Fairhope, Spanish Ford, Daphne, everywhere else, right? Whether they want an outdoor patio or just, you know, a fire pit, right, provide that to them, you know, at the right cost, where we're not losing money, but hindsight, maybe we could have done something a little different.
Looking at your five-year plan, '25, '26, '27, all under a million bucks, I mean, I'm assuming you expect more expenses going, and you haven't built in the cast iron replacement?
It's the main project, that, you know, and it'll change, right? The gate station was on there this year, we moved it back two years from now, so as things, you know, you find stuff that needs repaired more than something else, you kind of shift it around your five-year plan.
Okay. All right, Counsel, any other questions for Jeremy on this side? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mayor Kim, anything else y'all wanted to cover on the five-year plan, or we just talk about it starting next week when we get into it? All right. Next item up, Counsel, is committee updates. Councilman Burrow?
No updates.
Councilman Robinson?
Uh, no updates.
Councilman Boone?
Personnel board meeting has been canceled for this month, so I'll notify you when it's back on again.
All right, and I've got no update at this time. Department heads, and we can do this simultaneously with the agenda review, so let's see. Kim, you don't have anything extra, or do you, tonight?
I have, I don't, well, I just want to give, items number 10 and 11, I just want to note about that, and probably the fire department wants to discuss it also, but that's related to the impact fees. And so I did place a call in, for number 11, I did place a call in the fire department when I have to look at how that money's to be spent, how the impact money's supposed to be spent, and it's over a five-year period, and so their balance was getting where it was running over that, the amount collected over that five-year period to be used. So I called and said, hey, is there anything you can, $20,000, that's the radio, and so when you get to that, that's what you'll understand, it's not budgeted, but we're using the impact fee money, and I asked them for anything we could buy before the end of the year. So when they come to talk to you about the impact fund, and then the fire department, that's going to be, will not, that fire truck will not come in until year 24. that's going to be, will not, that fire truck will not come in until year '24. So, but that will be using partial general fund and partial impact fees. But this was me analyzing how we're going to use those impact fees.
Okay.
Item 14 and 15, item number 14 is to be able to move money that we, we have ourselves tax was under budget, so is to move a million dollars over to our capital projects fund for future projects. So, I know that's been discussed a few times, but anyway, that's funding to be able to move money from general fund over to the capital projects fund for future. And then the, and the number 15, that's just a, a budget adjustment that in the sanitation department, we have some trucks that keep, I guess, breaking down, Richard's here. So, we need to move some additional money into the repair and maintenance for those trucks to get us by until we have a new budget for '23.
Okay.
So, you have any questions on those agenda items?
I have one on item 11 on the radios. I'm assuming that's, we use those radios because that's what all the systems, but it certainly does seem like Motorola's taking advantage. That's, that's $5,100 a radio. And a cell phone that'll probably do 100 times what that'll do, a, a high-end phone's what, 1,200? These radios are $5,100 apiece? Is there...
They're, they're rated for, for getting fires and looking forward to doing jobs or if the cell phone really won't.
I'm not trying to tell you, you need to use a cell phone in place of the radio. What I'm trying to say is the technology now phones 10 times what it is in that radio. It, it's just, it, it just seems like the, the community, the, the law enforcement, fire department communities could find something that's a little bit, you know, more reasonable. We'll just spend it.
And Kim, those...
There are changes. We'll just spend it.
A million dollars in capital projects, that's that list that the mayor had gone over a couple, several council meetings ago, basically?
Yes, and we did the same thing last year as we seen our revenues were greater than, our sales tax revenues were greater than our budgeted, move those monies over to be able to have our future capital projects.
All right.
And on that radios, that radio system is the Baldwin County Commission developed that radio system?
That's what I'm saying.
So, that, so that may be a conversation with...
I'd like to talk to them and say, hey, y'all, is there anything out there?
A conversation with them to decide on radios, you know?
I know we don't have a choice, but I'm just saying that I can't fix the problem. I just think the community needs to come together and go to Motorola and say, look, you know, is there, I know, is there a competitor out there? Because $5,000 for a radio set is, it's, it's literally absurd.
And probably the next thing, this week I signed a proposal for our stop loss. Our stop loss did go up 8%. In that proposal, we can send out surveys...
How much percent?
8%.
Oh, okay.
8%. And our claims are up 5%. So, I didn't think the 8% in total is, is not that, that bad. It's not as bad as what we were, I believe, three years ago. So, the other thing is, is we have, if we send out some surveys, which HR department's going to work on that, that will limit our stop loss cannot be greater, any one year could not be, next year could not go greater than 20%. So, that's what HR department is working on those surveys that go out to the employees. And we will be bringing back some options that Cobb's and Allen has for our new plan year. So, that will be coming back later. I just want to update y'all on that, on the stop loss.
Thank you. And I know just the continuing rising costs of healthcare, we're going to have to get creative and get aggressive on trying to find ways to, to manage that, so thank you.
And we've, and the HR department's been pushing out the wellness programs, the health coaching, that symbol has started. I think there's, you know, we just have to continue to educate our employees, you know, on, on what healthcare costs.
Absolutely.
The utilization, that symbol is going to be a key to that.
Agreed.
Yeah.
It's a great service, I mean. All right, thank you, Kim. Chief Ellis, since we were on the topic of radios and fire truck, do you want to...
I'm going to talk, Mr. Chief, I'm going to talk about the truck.
All right, perfect.
Let's see that radio.
How are you doing this evening?
Good, good. How are y'all?
Doing good.
So, this fire truck, it's on the agenda, it's a 100-foot stick ladder. It's almost identical to the truck we have now at Station 1. It's just minus an axle, it's about 10 foot shorter. Roughly 24-month lead time on it. The reason we're coming to you now is September 1, they're hitting us with a 7 to 10% price increase. And this is fully outfitted equipment and all ready to hit the road.
Okay, so, so if you get it ordered and in place before September 1...
Correct.
You're locked in, otherwise you're looking at up to 10% increase?
Correct, yes, sir.
I guess I'm just trying to run through, it says, okay, and the lead time's two years almost?
Two years. 780 days is what they told us, so just under.
Being made here?
In Ocala, Florida.
Wow. Actually, that's just over two years.
It's screwing a bolt in a day?
Wow, okay.
This is a ladder truck you've been talking about for quite some time, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, probably a few years, right?
Yes, sir. Our ladder truck now is a 99.
Yeah.
So, it's in need for, not a replacement, but an upgrade.
You can tell it's a vehicle that's newer than that.
Yeah.
That's true. So, so it's not, so it's non-budgeted and we're funding 400 of it in 2024 budget. So, we just got to go ahead and commit to it now.
Yes, sir. So, that way we can get it on order until it goes down the assembly line.
All right, well, I just, some of those...
I think it's time to rip the Band-Aid off.
Yeah.
I just think we could pay half of it, we didn't have to buy those radios.
No comment.
Yeah. All right, I, I appreciate that. I just, I saw the, the lead time and the non-budgeted item and the dollar, I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
It's a very big dollar amount, so.
Well, we appreciate you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Keeping us safe.
Man, I wish I had a business that said, all right, if you don't buy now, we'll work it a couple of weeks, better tell us right now. You do that at work, Jeremy? I don't get a raise by September 1st, I quit.
Chief Hollinghead, you got anything today? Nothing? All right. Jeremy, you good? We've covered everything or...
Sure.
All right. Richard, did I, trying to hide back there. I know you've got some items.
Got a couple, few. I think we probably talked about the garbage fee ordinance. I don't think there should be any questions left on that. I think that is just the final adoption. I can speak to number nine as well as Jessica. We, we briefed y'all last meeting on this. This is an opportunity for recreational trails grant, which would be a companion project to the Gomesa grant there at the Triangle to add a, a small half-mile ADA compliant interior trail loop for, you know, all accessibility there. And I'll jump to 13, I'm going to come back to 12, save it for the last. 13 is associated with our MPO project at Gayford Road, which y'all have already approved the contract for. This is just the approved C E and I contract with GMC to do the oversight on the project. And I will remind you that that is an 80% reimbursable for the MPO, which pays for 80% of that project. And then, it's not Kim's fault, but number 15's my fault. I'll just tell you that with repairs, a cylinder repair on a garbage truck last year that, or two years ago, that cost 2,500, now is $5,000. It's just, we are, we are out of line on our maintenance budget, so we had to rock Peter to pay Paul there.
If we don't pay for it tonight, it'll be 7,500.
Item number 12 is, is, we're kind of all in this together. This is the final request for change order on the Church Street project and it has quite a lot of moving parts. And at face value, it looks very, very scary, but there is good news. There are really three components to this change order. One, the cured-in-place rehab for the existing sewer. When this project, actually, the bids were open in 2019 and, and those were the prices that were available to the contractor, the general that bid on this. Now, we jump ahead to 2022, the, the sub to do this work has had significant material increases at price. And as you may or may not be aware, that when the GC bid on the price, he guaranteed the prices for six months. And on most of the materials, he ordered them upfront so that they were locked in and we paid for stored materials, which was a savings for him and for us, as well as a guarantee for him that his prices were fixed. But on the cured place, that was an option, that, that was a work that had to occur later in the project toward the end, when the sewer force maintenance come online and those could be bypassed. And that represents a little over $176,000, this change order. There is a capture for memorialization purposes, quantity overrun, especially on binder and stone, which was just required due to the weather that we've had to secure the work areas from erosion and deterioration during times of construction. And then, 205,000 is additional work requested. These are found conditions. Examples being, we ended up doing, water took the opportunity to do work on, on Oak Street, which ended up pretty much cutting that asphalt up. And this would be resurfacing Oak as part of the resurfacing. Gas took the opportunity to replace cast iron services and services and main along Delamar. And this would include not only repaving, but restriping Delamar to deliver a cohesive project. And as you've heard the story of our corrugated metal pipe at Morphe, which we had, which was, we assumed good at the time of the design. It turns out that, that those cross drains that connects that drainage at Morphe is, is severely deteriorated corrugated metal pipe and replacing that. So, what is the good news? If you look at the last of your packet, the engineers of record went into a very deep dive on where we are on the project to date. And right now, and it's July 27th and we're probably about 85% of work complete on this project. We are currently underrunning $607,000 and that prediction should hold pretty true since many of these work items are 100% complete and will not be revisited in this project. So, the good news is, is that we feel that even though the total of this change order is a little more than 463,000, the project is under by 607. So, as far as a revenue impact or a budget impact, it is not going to be consuming any more dollars than that are not already budgeted for this project. And mostly, you know, the, the, the opportunity to go ahead and address Delamar Oak, the drainage at Morphe, as well as rehabbing the sewer, this needs to be done. And there is some additional sewer rehab that could be not done, but it's an opportunity to do it while that contractor's here. So, we are recommending this change order. We have our project engineers and from Sawgrass that can answer more questions. I think the utilities and public works are in agreement that this is a necessary thing and memorializing all of these factors to make sure that we've kept this contract properly managed. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any, any questions for Richard on this project? I know, as he mentioned, a lot of moving parts, so.
What was the original estimate? Five, I see it, 5.2?
Correct.
This is, that's a little more than I remembered, so this, this change order is, is actually percentagealized a lot less than what I had in mind.
Correct. We're, we're sitting...
We still should be 100 and something thousand dollars to the good?
Yes, sir. Not a little bit better than that.
Yeah, we find something to spend that on too. It's amazing how we do that. Want to throw some radios in there?
We want to come in a little under, just so we feel good about it.
Can we get 20 radios for 100,000?
All right, any other questions for Richard on that?
Well, we appreciate you and...
Thank you, sir.
Just, just to kind of give you an idea, if, if, if the weather will behave, you know, we're looking at punching out of this project, being out of here by the end of October. So, and...
Way this weather's been, that's a big issue.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
It'll end this week.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, going back to the front. Hunter, you got the, no, Eric, I'm sorry, I keep thinking it's some of the right-of-way construction ordinance. I know we've talked about this one quite a few times.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, we had two typos in our fee schedule. It showed the old fee and the new fee and I didn't, we didn't feel like arguing with a contractor as to which was applicable. So, we resubmitted it to have the old fee struck.
Okay. Thank you. Is number seven yours?
Hold on a second. What did you do now?
Sir?
You did what?
Well, the fees, when we redid the fee schedule, we had, when we were doing the red line on it, we showed the old fee crossed out and showed the proposed new fee.
Right.
When we adopted it, we did not catch that we did not take the old fee out.
Right, but then you just said you put the old fee back in.
No, sir. We're deleting the old fee. It's a tie-up, sorry. If I said that, I'm, I'm sorry.
You said you left the old fee.
It's been a long day, sorry. But no, we're deleting it out to eliminate the typo.
Okay.
Okay.
You have the new correct fee in there, right?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Is item number seven, is that also yours or...
No, sir.
Hunter, is that you, the MediaCom?
No.
Right-of-way to provide cable services. I mean, I think we've talked about this last week.
This is just a renewal of the franchise agreement?
Yeah, okay. All right.
I don't believe I have anything else.
Any other, yeah, any other topics?
No, the only thing I will ask, and I've, I've mentioned this to the mayor, trying to get the word out to our citizens to be sure and call and check with us when they're hiring contractors. We're seeing more and more folks who have got contractors coming in and they're leaving a mess or the contractor is walking away from the project and the contractor never obtained a permit. And now, trying to find these guys is just a nightmare and our, our citizens are being left in a really bad position. And we are there to answer questions, to verify that, yes, permit's been pulled, this contractor is licensed, but with so much work going on and everybody's so shorthanded, we're having contractors coming in from all over the place that, you know, we don't know and that doesn't mean they're not qualified, but we need to verify they're qualified.